Come on kiddo, I just changed your diaper.
Yeah, throw him in the trash, don't flush it.
What, what is it?
In my 25 years of plumbing, this is the worst stench I have ever smelled.
How did this happen?
You fed the monster these so-called flushable wipes.
Monster?
They call it the clog. With two G's because it's extra gross. You see, packaging will have you believe they are safe for plumbing and flushable, but in fact, they are not. They combine with other sewage in the pipes and become the clog. This is the monster you created.
I didn't know.
Next time, save yourself the headache and the repair bill, and throw those flushable wipes in the trash.
What? Oh my. Tammy, do you see how much this is gonna cost us?
Don't feed the clog monster. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it.
Hello, Mother. Something smells good.
Good morning, sweetie. I'm making breakfast for you. Can you clean the bacon pan for me?
Sure thing. No, Billy, don't do it. It's bad for your pipes and bad for the environment. Don't listen to him, Billy. Just pour it down the drain and forget about it. What's a little grease going to do? Actually, there's a lot that grease can do to damage your home and the environment. Picture this. When you decide to pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain, you are letting those substances harden up and stick to your pipe walls, causing clogs and backups in your home that can eventually lead to expensive repairs. And can also cause gross smells and a nasty situation for your neighborhood and the environment.
You can smell it.
Instead, when the substance cools down, stick it in a plastic container. Make sure the lid is sealed tight, and drop it off at your nearest cooking oil recycling station in Hillsborough County. That way, you're helping the environment and saving your family money. So think about you, that new skateboard you've always wanted. It's a win-win for everyone.
New skateboard? Oh yeah, your way is definitely better than mine. Let's recycle that grease.
For more information on how you can recycle your fats, oils, or grease, visit hcflgov.net/corm.
Welcome to a meeting of Your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the October 14, 2019 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign in the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on agenda items, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as followed. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Wildes to lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. All rise.
Let us bow. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this day and for this opportunity to serve our community in a spirit of truth and goodwill. Grant each of us the wisdom, knowledge, and mindset to be able to make decisions for all citizens that we represent. And bless our plan and design awards banquet. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildes.
You're welcome, sir.
Roll call, please.
Powell. Dix. Green. Joseph.
Here.
Kress. Marina. Willman. Thrower.
Here.
Wildes.
Here.
Dickerson. Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
You have corps.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for August 12, the regular meeting for September 9, and public hearing for Hillsborough County Plan Amendment September 9 and Plant City Plan Amendment for September 9. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Marina, second by Commissioner Wildes. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the minutes as written? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are going to move on to, actually, next up, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience today that wants to speak on any items that aren't on today's agenda? Please come forward. Okay, no public comment. We will move on. Item three on our agenda was the NPO CAC appointing Rick Richmond. He is gonna have to come back in November. So we are gonna move right on to item number four, consistency findings. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Janika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I am here to introduce Mr. Israel Monsanto from Development Services staff who is going to review with you today the second round of 2019 text amendments of the Land Development Code. There is, has been, one change to the agenda. Item B. That item is going to be workshop today rather than you all finding a consistent, making a consistency finding on that item. And it will be back before you at the November Planning Commission meeting for a consistency finding. Without further ado, Mr. Israel Monsanto.
Good afternoon. Israel Monsanto Development Services. So we're back here to the consistency finding. And these are the items that we're gonna be talking today. False faith mining, brew pubs, microbreweries, car wash facilities, and mobile home parks, recreational vehicle parks. Amendment 191043, again, this is the revision for clarification on Land Development Code Part 80200. No major changes since the last time we have met. And the purpose of this text amendment was to revise and clarify Land Development Code Parts 80200. Clarification on document certification of reclamation, release processing, revised filing and contents, requirement for annual reports, and revised calculation for financial responsibility payable to the board to cover all costs and expenses for completion of reclamation of any areas which are not completed. The Second Amendment is 191053, and this is the workshop portion of today's meeting. We have done some changes. As you are aware of the staff reports and also the amended text, we have included microwineries to these text amendments. And this is to add a standard for microbreweries, again, and microwineries to clarify, and also to clarify definitions of brew pubs. This amendment will recognize the emergence of locally independent microbreweries and microwineries. We'll also incorporate a standard for both, to allow retail sale and distribution wholesale of beer in commercial zoning districts. And this is to a maximum of 15,000 barrel of beer, or in the case of wines, will be 100,000 gallons of wine. And these metrics come from, it's, they are reported every month by the operators of these businesses. So it will be easy for Development Services staff to verify these production levels and to ensure they are being kept to those limits. And this is a public record as well. In commercial neighborhood districts, the beer and wine wholesale distribution will not be permitted. And this is consistent with today's Land Development Code to prohibit distribution or wholesale distribution in commercial neighborhood districts. We'll also have incorporated the definition of microwineries under the umbrella of microbreweries. And also, we have included the definition for brew pubs, which is gonna be clarified in the definition of the code. Car wash facilities. The purpose, again, for this text amendment is to clarify the car wash use in the commercial neighborhood zoning districts. This amendment will allow automated car wash in the commercial neighborhood districts. The definition of car wash will be clarified to specify differences between what is a self-serve slash automated and what is a staffed car wash facilities. Since the last time that we've met, this text amendment has not been changed. So it's basically the same as proposed originally. And then last, text amendment 191218. This is to modify the density provision for recreational vehicle parks. We're revising note number one of the Land Development Code Section 611110C1 to eliminate the density increases for proposed RV parks outside the urban service area or where there is no urban services available for those sites. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Just a question on the microbreweries. The, on the proposed language, option E, I'm sorry, line E, just kind of doing, from the breweries I know in the area, and whether or not they're close or nearby to residential district or residential use, it seemed like there might have been two or three that are currently nearby or adjacent. In your research, did you see any existing breweries that would potentially be tripped up by this? Or, you know, that option E there, that there may be a concern that there's existing brewery that would not qualify?
Sure. When you say option E...
Yeah, I'm sorry, line E. So the, point three specifically, prohibited within any yard abutting a residential use or residential zoning district. I could think of one off the top of my head. And I thought, just in kind of me looking at a map and looking at zoning maps, there might have been two others. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but in your research, were there any existing microbreweries that may be in conflict with the proposed language?
We haven't done a specific research on a case-by-case of existing, this type of existing businesses. But if they are in a commercial shopping site, there is a possibility that they are abutting residential parcels behind the shopping center. We would have to verify if they, like you said, if they're not in conflict with these new requirements because they won't be allowed to do some storage of those elements, especially if they are in the CN or CG districts. Once they are in the CI, then they would be allowed to have some storage upside. So we have to go and check whether those places are either CG or CI to make sure that they are not, it's not being created a nonconformity for that.
Okay, alright.
That's a good point.
And I can follow up at a later date. But that was just kind of in researching this. I'm glad it's being delayed a little bit. But in researching that, there's one in particular that I'm worried about. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I hear, are we gonna workshop this?
So today is the workshop?
Today's workshop.
Yeah, and then it'll be brought back in November for your consistency finding.
Okay, alright, well then I guess I can ask my questions in the workshop then.
Well, this is the workshop right now.
Oh, this is workshop. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was gonna be later.
On the breweries one, the other three will take action on today.
Okay, so then, one of my questions I have is, in terms of like wholesale distribution not being allowed in a CN district, I guess, first question, why, you know, why, what's the thought process in that not being allowed in that particular, you know, district? Because I'm aware of several places just in South County where you'll have, you know, there's CI, CG, and a CN, like, all next to one another. But if someone just so happens to be, you know, in a CN space, but they're surrounded by CI or CG, and it seems like they've kind of are hard timed, you know? And then as well, with wholesale distribution, is that meaning that you can't sell, like, you know, one bottle of beer? Or is it, you know, is there like a quantity amount that qualifies for like wholesale distribution?
The, our Land Development Code today doesn't allow wholesale distribution in commercial neighborhood districts. You have to have either commercial general and op, which is CG or CI or M. In the case of the microbrewery, once you get a CMV license from the state, that has the ability to allow the operator to wholesale or distribute their beer they produce. If you have a CG district, then you should be okay. The business operator should be okay to distribute, sell, distribute, either retail or have a distributor distribute their beer. What happens with the CN is that that's the less intense commercial zoning district. And once you go to distribution, then you're talking about a more intense commercial use. And even if this is a beer sales operation, our Land Development Code doesn't differentiate whether you distribute this type of goods or not. If it is wholesale distribution, you have to have a more intense commercial zoning district. If there is a situation where someone wants to open a microbrewery and they have a CN, and like you said, they have, they are surrounded by CG or CI, that will require rezoning for that, for that purposes, to allow that added use to that parcel, that's zone CN.
Right, and I guess my issue with it or concern with it is that I feel like microbreweries are, you know, obviously very popular now, and there's so many limited spaces of like CI or CG that are higher, you know, higher level intensities. And these are kind of meant to be more, to me, like neighborhood type of places. And so now you're really limiting, or we're limiting them to where they could really potentially be. And, you know, be an asset to a community, just, you know, like a local restaurant or something like that. So I'm just trying to understand if, you know, why, you know, what was the thought process there? And, you know, and then what is wholesale? I don't know what wholesale necessarily entails. If that means you can't sell a six-pack, or you can, and just like a quantity level?
Yeah, but, yeah, I was gonna answer that. Even if you get the CMV, the CMV will allow you to distribute, but it also allows you to do retail sale. You can still get a, you can wet zone your business. You can get a permit to sell alcohol beverages, and you can still sell your beer that you produce. What you won't be able to do is to sell your product through a wholesaler or distributor. But you still will have the ability to brew your beer and sell it to the patrons onsite, or you can, you know, you can sell it retail, but not do the distribution portion of it.
Okay, I understand. Alright, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Marina?
I'm sorry, I think just to clarify though, there's, Florida has a three-tier system. So a lot of microbreweries are not distributing their own beer. So even though it's, you know, it's in the language, kind of like, this is an inexact, this is kind of an inexact statement, but basically, Florida law would not allow a craft brewer to distribute their own beer. It still has to go to a distributor and then, you know, put out. So it's in here, kind of as a way to protect, you know, the existing development. But unless state law changes, they wouldn't have that ability in the first place. Correct? I mean, I think I...
Well, you have two types of licenses. The CMVP will basically restricts everything. I mean, the CMVP, you produce your beer, and you can only sell it to your patrons onsite. You can't even sell it retail-to-go, or you cannot even sell it to distribution. Like you said, the CMVP have that three-tier, which is direct to the customer through a distributor. And I don't remember the other one, but you can, you have those three different options. With this code amendment, you, even if you got your CMV license, you, again, you're correct, you have to have your, you have to follow those three-tier system. But also, you have to get the wet zoning of the site to still do your sales on your, on the premises. So it's, based on what in the industry and the operators are telling us is that when you go to the state to get your licenses, they have to, they require you to have some wet zoning on your brew pub, or your restaurant, or your microbrewery.
Joe Rutter for the Record Development Services. Our understanding, you're talking with the state, is that when the state issues your license, when they issue a license for somebody to manufacture beer, the manufacturing side is the one that allows it to be, to have a sibling that allows the retail side of it. And that also allows them to sell manufacturing. So they're not gonna distinguish. What we'll distinguish will be with our code. Our code's gonna allow the manufacturing and the distribution to occur in districts that currently allow either manufacturing and/or distribution consistently for all products. So we're not differentiating beer from other products, going back to the question from Commissioner Powell. So when someone comes into our office and we sign off, we have the ability to sign off on their license, depending on what the district allows, it will allow the brewing and the sales, which is really what a lot of people need. And then in some cases, the brewing, package sales, and distribution, which is what some of them need. And it would also allow the sale of growlers. So in organizing the amendment this way, we feel like that we've touched all the pieces that at least the industry citizens that we met with have needed, you know, out of our code. And admittedly, our code hasn't kept pace with the brew industry. And so this should bring it up to speed to, you know, touch all those aspects that where we need to update. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up? So then, is the reason why we're workshopping this today because of the edits that have to be made that are in the presentation?
The reason we're workshopping it today is that when we went to our first public hearing, there was a request from the microwinery industry to combine this with a microbrewery. They're very similar. At the public hearing, the board felt that was a reasonable request. So we're trying to blend that into this because it fits very well into the same regulation. And to do that, by the time we were able to craft it, touch base with the state on their metrics for verification, and also get input from the industry, it was late last week, and we didn't want to bring a changed regulation for you for a consistency finding and not have your staff and yourself a chance to have advanced knowledge of it. So we asked Melissa if we could handle today as a workshop for this item and then bring it back before the commission in November for a consistency finding. So we would have the ability to Q&amp;A and gather input from the commission today on this item. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on this item, the microbrewery? Okay, they'll be back, brought back in November. We have three other Land Development Code text amendments, so we're gonna handle them each individually in terms of voting on them. The first one is the reclamation release process. Any public comment on that item? Any questions from commissioners on this item? And it's the one at the top, 19-1043, Section 8.0208. So make sure you're all looking at the correct one. Any questions from commissioners on the reclamation release process? Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the language that gets specific regarding the process of receiving a reclamation release, that makes a lot of sense. In there, however, it talks about a couple of different things. But one is that the permittee shall be limited to no more than two times a year, twice per year. Was there a specific reason for that? Has that become a burdensome issue, or?
Commissioner Dix? Mike Stevenson, who is the staff from the Poly utilities, is on his way. He should be here very shortly. He should answer that question for you. So we may, we may wait, or...
Commissioners, we have staff that we're waiting, that basically drove the preparation of this amendment. To get an accurate answer on that, we can either continue this to later in the day-to-day, or I would request that you continue that item to November when we come back with the winery, and then we can deal with both of those at that point. The preference would be the commission's.
Well, if I might, let me just tell you my two questions on it. So, I mean, if we continue it, you guys can huddle up on it. Is one, was there a reason for establishing, in fact, you can only do it two times a year? Was that becoming a burdensome process? And then number two, does that limit the person, or the entity, rather, in the, you know, the unusual event? But does that limit them? unusual event? But does that limit them from having the request on one particular project only two times a year, or that they are limited to two times a year, no matter how many projects they are in charge of the reclamation process? So those are my two concerns.
We can get those concerns responded to, but we're not gonna be able to do that until we get the staff in for that particular piece.
Got it. That's fine.
So I would request that we either move forward with what you have before you without question, and then we can either take that one up later, or we can continue that one to track with the microbrewery amendment that's gonna be coming back in November. And I apologize that we don't have all the staff here.
Is the staff on his way so that we might be able to...
Staff has been advised.
Okay. So we could hold off on that one. And if he shows up during this meeting, we could, we could vote on it, or get the questions answered and vote. If not, we'll just, we'll, we can continue it to November. So we'll hold off on that one for now. And I'm gonna move on to the text amendment for the car wash facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on the car wash facility text amendment, car wash uses? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? And this is text amendment 19-1054, section 6.11.121. No questions from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion for approval of this text amendment? Commissioner Moreno?
I move that we approve the attached resolution, find the proposed land development code text amendment related to the types of car wash uses allowed in the commercial neighborhood zoning district consistent with the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Dowdy. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, is in favor of this text amendment motion? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're moving on to the mobile home and recreational vehicle parks text amendment. Any public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? No questions? Would someone like to make a motion for this item?
I, I move that we approve the attached resolution, find the proposed land development code text amendment related to recreational vehicular parks regulations on corporate Hillsborough County, consistent with the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, forward this recommendation to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moreno. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nigel. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are gonna move on, well, actually, is, before we move on, has staff arrived yet for that one item? Nope, not yet. We'll move on to item number five, the consistency finding for the 2045 long-range transportation plan.
Good afternoon. Sarah McKinley, NPO staff. I've been in here a couple of times already going through our 2045 long-range transportation plan update. Today, I'm gonna give you sort of the final update as we near adoption. So just a quick review of what the long-range transportation plan is. It is our 20-year plan. It's sort of the vision for where we see Hillsborough County going via transportation in those years, as well as prioritizes projects for both federal and state funds. As far as where we are creating the plan, we began this two years ago with our 2045 growth estimates. And then since then, we've had a couple rounds of public outreach. We finalized those population employment projections. We worked on identifying our needs and also putting together our revenue forecast, as well as our second round of public outreach. After that, we completed our needs assessment. I believe that was presented to you. And then here we are with our draft for public comment. And then our plan adoption is November 5th. This plan, we do realize with that November 5th adoption date, there are still a few things up in the air and decisions to made after that. So we are ensuring that we do build in that flexibility. We know with the SRTAX, there's still questions on that, as well as, once those initial questions are answered, then looking at both Hillsborough County and HART for their lead on additional capacity projects, as well as what does fixed guideway look like. We also have Florida Department of Transportation. They're still working on their supplemental environmental impact statement, so reviewing that, as well as what should be done to I-275 north of downtown. And then the Expressway Authority has multiple project development and environmental studies that are going on right now. So what are the outcomes of those gonna be? So I did mention, we worked on our revenue forecast through that with the addition of the SRTAX. We're looking at $32.2 billion to be forecasted between 2026 and 2045. And this sort of is a breakdown of who administers those funds. So again, we're looking at FDOT, about 41%. Hillsborough County will get about 25% of that funding. HART is up to 23% of that funding. The municipalities split about 9%. And then the NPO would administer about 2% of those total funds. So when we're putting together the cost feasible plan of the long-range transportation plan, we can first look at what are the funding forecasts. And those are divided by federal, state, and local sources. And then within each of those sources, there's different eligibility requirements that can be applied to those. So we then look at what are those eligibility requirements, and then from there, allocate those funds through either our major programs or major projects that we've identified to be included in the cost feasible plan. So this is sort of just an overview of where we would be without the SRTAX. Without the SRTAX, about 55% of those funds overall would go to the strategic intermodal system, as well as the state highway system. But with the insurgence of the SRTAX, we're able to increase the allocation to transit by 36%, and then also funding projects to make our roads more safe and reliable, up to 54%. We did do two rounds of public outreach, and this is just a little overview. In that first round of public outreach, we got about 10,000 respondents. And this was done at the tri-county level, so this was done along with Pinellas and Pasco NPOs. And through that, we heard that people are looking at minimizing outward growth, reinvesting in established neighborhoods, strengthening downtowns, reducing congestion overall, looking at different alternatives to driving, as well as what technologies can help us with that too. This is an overview of sort of what the respondents we got from our public engagement phase two. This focused just on Hillsborough County. There was a possibility, if you lived in another county, you could have taken it. But what we saw from the respondents is that overwhelming percentage both either lived or worked in Hillsborough County. That second round of outreach focused on the major projects. This is, I think, one of the presentations that I brought to you, where we looked at what capacity projects should be considered, and sort of asked yes or no, as well as, this also included questions about fixed guideway transit. So from this chart, you can see, whoops, the top three there, sorry, I thought there was a box on it. But the top three there are the reuse of the freight tracks, as well as a rapid transit between downtown and the airport, and then also the extension of our downtown streetcar. So overwhelmingly, out of all of the capacity projects or major projects that we asked about, those were the three that we had the most favor for. And then also followed by trails as well. We also asked about the downtown interchange. There were four alternatives that we looked at, the no-build, the, what we're calling the safety quick fix, the addition of express lane flyovers, or then the total build-out. And this is sort of what we got back from respondents. The interesting thing about the response that we got for this question is that it's about 3,800 for each of them. So that means pretty much everybody went through each of those slides and voted on at least one of these. Overwhelmingly, we can see that the no-build was not favored. And then when we start looking and narrowing down, what do the one to five stars mean, we can see that the full rebuild with express lanes, so that total, I guess, blowout of the interchange was sort of the second least favorable. And then when narrowing down and trying to look at, and also working with the department of what should be included for the downtown interchange, we've decided to include the safety quick fix, or portion of the interchange. So I mentioned that we have program-based funds, as well as our major projects for investment. This is a breakdown of what those $32.2 billion would look like for each of these programs. The first one being state of good repair and resiliency with just over $7 billion. We have our Vision Zero safety projects. This accounts for just about $2 billion. Our smart cities, this is looking at technology to help us along the way, a little over $3.4 billion. And then our real choices when not driving, this is looking at the expansion of our current bus system, as well as our trails. And this is just over $6.6 billion. And then there you see sort of that bottom priority, the major investments. These are capacity projects that I'll go through in a little more detail, also including a lot of the state and federal funds for highways. So as far as what do those projects get us, that state of good repair, just as a reminder, is looking at pavement, bridges, coastal protection, so our resiliency projects, as well as the maintenance of our existing transit system. Our Vision Zero looks at complete streets, other safety enhancements, as well as lighting. Then we have our smart cities, which looks at improving intersections, as well as, again, using technology, advanced traffic management systems, improving signals. And then Real Choices, looking at expanding the bus services, as well as building out our trails network, too. And then again, our final program there, the major investments, is looking at the fixed guideway or rapid transit in its own right-of-way, as well as major interchange improvements, and also new through lanes on roadways. So we did a couple of technical analyses along the way as well. And this is sort of an overview of what we did with the transit analysis. We modeled the reuse of the CSS tracks, as, along with the expansion or extension of the downtown streetcar, and also had a robust sort of bus and local network that went along with this. And again, this was one of the major, more favorable projects in that part, too. We then look at the strategic intermodal system. These are the roadways determined to help move freight, goods, people. Of those, DOT redoes this plan every year. It's updated. And through that, we have express lanes on both I-75 and I-4, the Howard Franklin Bridge Westshore interchange, as well as the addition of lanes on Selman East and Selman West. We have the CSX Port Grade Separation Project, just outside of the port, near Causeway, as well as, like I previously mentioned, the downtown interchange quick fix project. And then looking at I-275 north of downtown, this includes the addition of two lanes, as well as interchange improvements along there as well. There's also a portion of the funds that are from federal funds and state funds that go towards state roads that are not on the strategic intermodal system, that are on the state highway system. And so we've worked with DOT to identify some of the projects that should be included in here. We've looked at US 301, just outside of Palm River, or through Palm River, also US 41 in South County, US 92, both east and west of Plant City, as well as State Road 60, and also Causeway, just west of the port. We have been working with county staff to look at some projects that should be identified for their portion. There is also a portion of funds that could be used for major projects for them. At this point, they're still working their way, again, with many questions to come from SRTAX and funding source. So at this point, we're just listing some possible candidate projects for them. As far as our performance-based outcomes that we're projecting based on these funding amounts, we're looking at sort of reducing that backlog and the resurfacing, so getting roads to be resurfaced every 17 years, as well as three major, 11 minor, either bridge rehabs or replacements every year, reduce our bus breakdowns by 50%, while also reducing our fleet age from nine to seven years. And then also an additional $22 million annually to go towards our highly vulnerable and critical roadways. For our Vision Zero, with the funding source, we're projecting an additional 500 miles of lights, as well as 1,400 miles of sidewalks, 350 miles of complete streets, and reducing crashes by 35%. Our smart cities program is looking at additional 220 miles worth of improvements on our roadway network, reducing delay by 40%, and then improving travel time reliability by 30%. And then for our real choices, we're looking at updating 100 miles and expanded service. So this would be an additional 500 miles over sort of what we could get today, as well as virtual build-out of our trails network at 150 miles, and then increasing our sort of what we consider isolated door-to-door trips for transit by 34%. As I've mentioned a couple of times already, there are still some questions after the plan is adopted. So we will continue to work with HART. Last week, we had our first NPO and HART workshop to discuss what does fixed guideway mean, what are the first steps, where do we start with this? Those discussions will continue to go on, especially after we hear the news on the SRTAX. Also continuing to work with our jurisdictions on the studies that they have going on, and when they're ready to move forward with projects. And then we'll continue to monitor sort of the performance outcomes that come from this plan, and continue to support our partnering agencies. So if you have any questions of me, or else I'll just let Katrina get into her portion.
I have one, actually.
Oh, Commissioner Dix?
That was a very nice presentation. But my question is, could you please, when you're gonna make a presentation, that as extensive as that is, which was really good, could you include that in our materials so that when we look at it, you know, over the weekend or whatnot, we could really devour it? Because I had a couple of minor questions I was gonna ask you about, but they're minor. So I mean, it doesn't change my overall opinion. But I would have loved to have been able to really have digested that. So could you please include that, if you can? Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sarah. I've seen this, of course, several times. And I certainly appreciate the work that NPO staff has, has put into this. But I do still have some concerns because, can you go back to the slide, one of the slides that showed the, the community's preference, that one? Okay. This, this first, this first one, which talks about using freight rail tracks, and of course, the assumption is that that would be our fixed, an opportunity for us to introduce fixed guideway transportation in this, in this community. My, my, my concern is that as we do this, we update this every year, I'm concerned about how much language are we putting in there that deals with fixed guideway transportation? And then go back to your other slide, which had the, the sort of the, that one, I'm sorry, that one with the half circle.
Oh.
Okay. Now, a lot of voters who voted on this referendum back almost a year ago, you know, will look at this and say, well, this, this doesn't, this doesn't talk about fixed guideway transit as a priority. Okay? So, and I know we're at the early stages, but like I said, this is, this is, you know, this is, this is a huge document. There's , has all kinds of components in it. But I think it only makes, mentions fixed guideway one time, and that's in that, in that survey sheet. You mentioned it in your presentation. But I'm concerned about how is this sort of getting into our process? Okay? Because these are huge numbers. And, and of course, we're using, this is with the SRTAX dollars. Okay? And people looking at this are gonna say, well, well, where, where does that exist? Is, is it, does it show up in, in the real choices when not driving element, or, or in one of these other elements? But again, that's, that's just my observation, my, my own concern.
The, if I can answer, the expansion of the transit is sort of twofold. The expansion of the local bus network and any additional service of, you would think on a traditional bus, would be in that little blue. on a traditional bus, would be in that little blue, the Real Choices bucket. The green does include a certain amount of funding allocated to fixed guideway transit. So that has been separated out. And then we have this map, and there's going to be a page in the plan that says, sort of, we know that the community wants fixed guideway, and we're, it's, that discussion needs to happen a bit more before we can dictate what goes in our plan. So we are leaving a bit of a placeholder for that, to allow HART to come back and have their discussions and continue, and then they'll let us know once they've decided which corridors and technologies to move forward on. We just don't want to dictate those yet, so we looked at multiple technologies, looking at commuter rail, as well as water transit, again, the extension of the streetcar, and then also the CSX.
Modernization of the streetcar.
Yes, yes. That does, that project does include the modernization as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's...
If I could just add, if you look in the draft long-range transportation plan that's on our website, on page 36, there's a whole page about a vision for a major transit system, and it specifically says in big, bold, purple letters, Hillsborough County can lead the charge in the Tampa Bay area as an incubator for new technologies like fixed guideway transit. And then it talks about the considerations that need to be, come into play as we make those decisions, the capital cost per mile, the capital cost per station, connections between communities of concern and key economic spaces, annual operating costs, and population density. So I think that's the real, the planned guidance that is being put forward to shape that this needs to be a major component, and we don't know quite yet. That also shows the different technologies, but that's the things we should be looking at in terms of metrics to determine which is best for us.
Okay. I understand, of course, we're, you know, we're at the, you know, at the beginning stages of this.
Yes, very much.
But I just don't want the, you know, the, I don't want us, you know, the MPO board, you know, to convey to the community that this, you know, this was a priority when people voted last November on the SRTAC referendum, that somehow it's getting lost, or just, you know, bury. Thank you. Okay. That's my, that's my only concern. Thank you.
Well, I guess that's the way we sort of lead off with the transit when we're looking at the major investments, because that 55% that I mentioned earlier would consist of basically, oh, where'd they go? These two slides, so that other arterial funds, and then this assist funding sources, those are sort of that one that would be in there. Because of the SRTAC, we do have the ability to look at the fixed guideway. And so, like Melissa mentioned, we did look at what the highest ridership potential, and that's those two lines there between the airport and downtown and downtown USF, but then also looking at other communities of concern and other influences that should be included. But at this point, we didn't want to get too far ahead of HART board, so we've been working with them on a solution, sort of a placeholder.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Niget.
Good presentation. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. I have one simple question. Isolated door-to-door trips, 30, 35% reduction, what is an isolated door-to-door trip?
It's, they don't today have a sort of regular service, so it would increase regular service to other populations that, other than get it today.
No, but what is the isolated door-to-door trip in and of itself? What does that mean, isolated door-to-door trip?
A trip that doesn't currently, can't get from door-to-door using bus transit.
So we're talking about a 35% reduction in personal vehicle transportation?
Not necessarily overall, but that is the amount of population that would now be able to get additional service.
So an increase in public transportation, not a reduction in...
And it's an increase in the network served.
Okay.
They're no longer isolated.
Yeah.
So right now, they're isolated, and they would be served with transit, right?
I got you.
Yes.
I got you. I got you. What's the door-to-door part, then? I got the isolation part, so what's the, yeah, just humor me here, I'll be the guy.
Within a quarter-mile of a transit network, or transit stop.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Joseph. Commissioner Chris.
Sarah, I think I caught one of the things you said, is that we would be virtually building out the trail network. And I wondered, is that actually trails that are, not on-road trails, but off-road trails?
Correct.
So, okay, so that's not striping and bike lanes and complete streets kind of thing?
No, no. That's, that's that other, different bucket, with the bike lanes and such. That is the, what is it, the tri-county or multi-county trail map that we have? That network that's planned within there could be virtually built out with the allocated funds from the SRTAC.
Like the bypass canal trial, canal trial, that kind of thing?
Yes, South County Greenway, all those kinds of things.
Okay. I guess was Katrina going to say something? Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Planning Commission review of the 2045 Draft Long Range Transportation Plan. This is an action item, and a resolution will be provided for your vote. Staff reviewed all four comprehensive plans for consistency with the LRTP. Plans for Temple Terrace, Plant City, Tampa, and unincorporated Hillsborough County contain policies stating that the jurisdiction should coordinate or implement multimodal transportation system improvements, as shown in the MPO's Long Range Transportation Plan. Commissioners, in our review, we did find one project that is inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County comprehensive plan. The State Road 60 widening outside of the urban service area to the Polk County line is included in the LRTP Cost Affordable Map. It is inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Future Land Use Objectives 1 and 2, and Policy 2.1. These policies discuss the urban service area boundary, which serves as a means to provide an efficient use of land in public and private investment. It is also used to contain urban sprawl. Generally, public infrastructure is directed within the urban service area so as to encourage development to occur within this boundary. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the 2045 Draft Long Range Transportation Plan consistent with the comprehensive plans of the cities of Temple Terrace, Plant City, Tampa, and unincorporated Hillsborough County, with the removal of the State Road 60 widening outside of the urban service area. Staff also recommends that the Planning Commission transmit comments and observations to the MPO board. I'm happy to answer questions related to this consistency review. Sarah McKinley, MPO staff, and Ed McKinney, FDOT District 7, are also available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions from Commissioners? Sounds good.
Say something about this.
My name is Ken Spitz. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager with District 7 of FDOT. As to the SR 60 widening, we would actually argue that it is consistent. It's in the current plan now. It will be part of the 2045 LRTP that Sarah just described, as she mentioned to you. There's also good reasons, we brought some data to talk about that, if you have any questions, specifically about the growth that's expected there, both in employment and also in residences, and also the traffic that would be generated by that development.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where exactly does the urban service area or line sort of, boundary sort of cross Highway 60? How far, how far to the east?
The urban service area goes to, as far as Turkey Creek Road on the south side of State Road 60, to include the land use category for the energy industrial park category that goes from Dover Road to Turkey Creek Road. So, using the LRTP lingo, there's Segment 27 that is abutting from Dover Road to Turkey Creek, then 28 and 29 would be the ones that are really outside the urban service area completely.
Okay. This is, this is an agricultural part of the county, for the most part, headed towards Polk County, let's say. So, I mean, why, why does DOT really need to widen it for, when those purposes are, I mean, those types of land uses are pretty, pretty consistent all the way to the county line? So why, you know, why is, why is this widening, why is it, why is it necessary?
Well, I would say we are looking out to 2045, so I'm not saying that it's necessary today. In fact, for the plan, we would, and the SIS plan, the Strategic Intermodal System Plan, we would be looking beyond 2030, before even design money was spent. So we are looking further out than that. What I would say about that, though, the demand, we're looking at, within what we defined as the East Hillsborough County area, which was basically from Valrico to the county line, right, Valrico Road, and then from I-4 south to just past Lithia Pine Crest. And according to the land use data that we have, provided by the MPO, just in the change of population, we're looking at a 57% growth to 2045, that's 64,000 new residents. We're looking at a 49% growth in employment, that's over 20,000 new jobs. That's not even taking into account what's happening on the other side of your border in Polk County. So when we see that, that tells us, and when we put that information into the model, that's what tells us that there is demand there.
Okay. I'm well aware what's happening along County Line Road, with the distribution centers and all that development. But, does that have anything to do with this? I mean, does this in any way have any relationship to, I mean, I-4 is part of the strategic intermodal system, but does this, would this be considered a portion of that, or in any way?
To the extent that it's included within the data, the data that I mentioned, which, as I said, came from the MPO, yes.
Okay.
Not going to say it's all based on that, but that's certainly contained within those numbers that I gave you.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Commissioner Chris.
Yeah, I don't totally understand the conflict either, and I think when Sarah was going through her presentation, we saw several kind of road widenings in eastern Hillsborough County, maybe the Plant City area, and I think even west of that. So I'm just curious, like, why, why are we opposing, why are we finding one inconsistent, and we're not finding the others inconsistent? Is it about where the urban service area is, or?
I'd be happy to answer that. So, yes, a number of the road widenings along I-4 and US 92 serve Plant City, and Plant City has also identified a northeast master plan from, that's east of 39 and north of I-4, basically. So they're planning for a considerable amount of growth in that area. They also, as was mentioned, are planning for all that growth along County Line Road. The other growth, there also is growth anticipated along the I-4 corridor, that's something that, we're kind of stuck in a place where the county's comprehensive plan hasn't been updated since 2008. It has a horizon year right now of 2025, so it's a little out of sync, perhaps, with what DOT is looking at, if they're looking at this as being beyond 2030. So, the, but the county's comprehensive plan right now does not anticipate anything but rural-level growth in that area, south of Plant City and east of the urban service area. And that is why we were, we looked at it in this way. The county has studied some areas along I-4, so there is the extension of Sly Avenue that goes outside the urban service area that is in the long-range transportation plan, specifically to serve the Tampa Executive Airport, and some of the growth that they're hoping to happen along that 301, I-75, I-4 triangle, kind of. But the, there hasn't been any sign from the unincorporated area that they want additional growth in this area, and that's why we reflected that in our consistency finding, but it ultimately is up to you all.
Commissioner Moreno?
No, Commissioner Dix.
Go ahead. No, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think my, you know, going, going back and kind of looking at having an SIS, having an SIS project there, and you look at just north of that, I guess that would be 92, which is the R-7, R-8 project. I, my inclination is to support as consistent and keep 60 widening there, because the development that we've already seen on County Line, just from the Plant City side of things, or at least may not in Plant City city limits. But then the other part of it, too, is that if we're looking at a project that is in the 2030 time range, and we say, well, we don't know if there's really going to be a need in 2030, then we could apply that to every project, and then we're kind of line item vetoing every project that is out in the future. And I think the last point I'll make on that is that while that area is currently agricultural, and that's the future vision, is to be agricultural, there's more larger farming practices, number one, and number two, for any small property owner, even if they're outside the urban services boundary, I don't think we should limit them to agriculture in the future. So State Road 60, other than I-4, is the only real opportunity for a significant transportation corridor there. So my, it'd be my preference to keep the LRTP as is, including with the 60 widening.
Commissioner Dix.
Well, I think that was well said, Commissioner Moreno. It, you know, we're, we're looking here at a 25-year draft plan, and, you know, FDOT has already concurd that it makes sense to them, and frankly, when we consider the fact that the county may have no intention of expanding the urban service area, perhaps the reason the county has no plan to expand the urban service area in that direction is because they recognize the interest of Plant City, of future incorporation of that area, as the city grows. The city is looking at not only growth to the north, but also growth to the south. I would hate to remove it from the, from the long-range transportation plan, only to have to come back later and try to add it for the portion for Plant City. It seems logical that it should stay in there, and I would concur with what Marina, with what Commissioner Marina said.
Commissioner Green.
Just, just a question, do we know what District 1, Oren Barto, is going to do with Highway 60?
Yes, they have the same plan that we do. It's on the SIS for after 2030. It would also be the widening, same widening.
So, so that would mean, if I understand, it would be widened to...
County line, and then stop.
And then stop.
Yes.
And then, yeah.
Yes.
That's just brilliant.
Yeah. If I might, what I failed to mention earlier was that this is in the Cost Affordable Plan, so this is not, this is not the needs plan, it's the Cost Affordable Plan. It does correlate with exactly what's going to happen in District 1. It also correlates with the state's overall plan for emergency evacuation, where we're using the roads that are divided by 10 as the major east-west in order to connect the two interstates, I-95 and I-75.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Chris.
So I guess I'd like to just clarify, did, you know, did staff, is staff aware of Polk County's plans, and did staff take that into consideration when they made the inconsistency finding?
So, we looked at the current horizon of the comprehensive plan, and looking at those growth projections, it wasn't supported. And we've looked at all the other studies and things like that, but looking at these policies, it was inconsistent. So it didn't seem like the, it was supported.
Yes, we were aware of what, I mean, Polk County has the Intermodal Logistics Center, maybe I got the name right? And, and so certainly, that, that's important for them to, to have access to that. Yeah, I mean, I think the issue truly came down to the policies about directing growth and infrastructure investments into the urban service area that lie in the, in the county's plan, like Katrina said.
Commissioner Dowdy. Commissioner Doughty?
Melissa, in, are there other policies that we have that would speak to the connectivity that we would need to Polk County? Anything else that we could refer to, to provide us as the commission the ability to cite another couple of policies to say, no, we disagree because, and cite several other policies to say, look, it may not make sense based upon the policies that were cited by staff, what was it, Element Objectives 1 and 2 and Policy 2.1, but in keeping with the other study information that we're aware of, the other development in our adjacent community, and I mean, we don't want to be just doing long-range transportation for only Hillsborough. I mean, we are a good neighbor, right? Is there something else that we can refer to?
Anything related to 92 or?
Or the, what's the road north of I-4? That goes east-west?
Sam Allen?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was part of the issue that we, that we struggled with was the fact that where the, our projections and the county discussions, which have not materialized into, into plan policy yet, have been directed, have been directed towards the I-4 corridor, not towards the State Road 60 corridor. So we would be thinking more along the lines of improving parallel facilities to I-4 to support the type of projections that we were anticipating. And unfortunately, I don't have right in front of me the map of all the TASs and where the projections lied, but I would say that's where we were, we were trying to aim for more of the growth happening along the I-4 corridor as opposed to the State Road 60 corridor. To your original question, sorry. I mean, I think Policy 1.5.8 that was cited related to the transportation element, you know, talks about coordinating not only with the county's transportation element, with the DOT's plans and the MPO, but also regionally with the Regional Planning Council, the heart, and the, specifically says the plans of adjacent jurisdictions. So I think if you wanted to, if the Planning Commission wanted to make the motion and just stop it at the comma before with the removal, and then we would remove that last whereas clause from the resolution, and I think we would be fine.
Commissioner Kress?
I mean, I'll just point out that we just saw a presentation on a survey from the county, and I think we heard priorities are to minimize outward growth, and we heard to, the road widening, the bar chart looked like road widening in rural areas, there wasn't a whole lot of support for that. So I would personally, I think, attend to agree with staff on this one, that just the black and white policies just don't, they're not there yet.
Okay, Commissioner Wilman?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Kress on this, because we're making a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plans, it's not, from what I understand, it doesn't mean that the MPO can't still approve it, right? So we're just making a finding of consistency. Whether or not it gets approved the way it's being presented is not up to us to decide necessarily, we're just making a consistency finding. And I think, based on the policies that were presented, I do agree that widening of the roads would, you know, of State Road 60 would not be consistent with the plan policies.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that with all due respect to Commissioners Moreno and Dix, I agree with Commissioners Wilman and Kress that our charge here isn't to predict the future, right? Our charge here is to work within the policies that are set. Fortunately, the policies have restricted us in a certain area, so maybe it's our job to get a move on changing those policies, right? But I don't think we should start playing guessing games of this is going to happen here and we're going to expect that here, because that could end up a lot of different ways, right? So I definitely agree with my two fellow commissioners who just spoke. And I will go with staff on this one.
Commissioner Dix?
And with all due respect to Commissioner Joseph, our, our whole responsibility is simply to find consistency. And as has been pointed out by the executive director, simply eliminating the verbiage after the end of the comma would relate to other portions in finding it consistent. So you can go either way with this. So what you're suggesting is, by going along with staff, you are, in effect, making a projection for in the future, which is what you said you, that we should not be doing. And I'm suggesting that we leave that future open so that those, those bodies, such as Plant City, as well as Hillsborough County, can make those decisions as time goes on without making it an onerous task of taking it back to the MPO and then forcing it back to this commission.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Can we go back to, I guess it was the first presentation that did the bar charts based on project type, like the major investments bar chart? So I've seen this presentation a few times now, and I think the point to note here is that, to Commissioner Kress's point, road widening near rural area does have the largest percent negative. So that is something to consider, although it's interesting that Plant City knew wider roads does not have the same, and then when you kind of rank the blue bars, that is not as high up. Same thing with South Shore Roads. And I don't think it was in this slide, or is this, does this also have the, the color coding of, like, what Plant City thinks about the?
Oh, the maps?
Yeah.
Yeah, not in this presentation.
Okay. So there's another slide where, when you break it down by zip code, and you ask the question, I forget if it was Plant City wider roads or road ridings near rural area, but basically the entire county says it's a bad idea, but people who live in that area. And so there's definitely a point to be made about, you know, this is, this is, we want to concentrate growth in specific areas, but the thing that I keep going back to is that with the development that has occurred out there, and we're, you know, either predicting or not predicting out there, the fact is that within 10 minutes of this site is a major Amazon distribution area now, and as far as you could tell, that type of development is not going to change. And I grew up in an area where if I drive 10 minutes, it's suburban development, and you cross the county line and it's not suburban development, it's rural. So I think for having a plan that's out in 2030, to me, it makes sense to keep it in there, and as, as our, you know, our exec director, executive director mentioned, just leave it as is and keep those, keep those widenings in there because of the fact that from, what we saw from the zip code portions of this is that the people out there believe they need at least some roads to be widened.
Any other questions? Okay, no further questions. I'm going to ask, I still haven't asked if there's any public comment on this item. So anyone in the public, in the audience, want to speak on this item? Okay, no public comment. I'll go back to, any further questions? No further questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Doughty?
I'll make a motion that we find the 2045 draft long-range transportation plan consistent with the comprehensive plans of the cities of Temple Terrace, Plant City, Tampa, and unincorporated Hillsborough County.
We got a motion by Commissioner Doughty. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Dix. Any further discussion before we vote?
Are we striking the 60 or are we keeping the 60?
It wasn't included, it wasn't included in that, so it's, it's not included. Any other questions? It's the, that's been, that's been stricken, right? Commissioner Doughty, that's not, you've removed that from the motion.
Not in my motion.
Yep, so that's been removed. Okay. Any further questions? So basically, the motion, I'll let Commissioner Doughty say it one more time, just so there's no question about it?
Motion is to find the 2045 draft long-range transportation plan consistent with the comprehensive plans of the cities of Temple Terrace, Plant City, Tampa, and unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Okay. No, Commissioner Dix has already seconded it, so.
I'm so well-studied.
So we had some questions. Any further questions before we vote? No further questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, so we have seven, and I, seven in favor, and then Commissioner Wilman, Commissioner Joseph, and Commissioner Kress are opposed, so it passes seven to three. Am I correct? Seven to three? Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Melissa reminded me, at the beginning of the meeting, we're supposed to complete, we have a statement of interest forms, so in your packet that was mailed to you, there was a statement of interest forms for elections for next meetings for officers, that's going to be held at the next November meeting. So if you, if you haven't completed it, if you can complete it and submit it to, I apologize.
Vivek Bhabar filling in for Tracy Robin.
Okay, thank you. If we can submit them to him, he will consolidate or the information and provide it to us.
When was that submitted?
I think it was in the packet that was, that was sent to us.
You need some hard copies?
Sure, it went on the electronic.
Yes, it was. It's in the attachments.
It was behind the minutes.
Yes, behind the minutes. Last page, behind the minutes. It's the last page.
I'll get some copies made.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And once they get some hard copies, we'll get that together and we'll be good. We are going to go back to the item number four. My understanding is the, for item number four, the text amendment reclamation process, staff is here to answer our questions.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would introduce Mike Stevenson of County Staff, and he's available to answer any questions you might have on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to go back, Commissioner Dix. Did you, I'll let you.
Well, thank you. I'm having a hard time finding, I have to speak for memory, there was an expansion of the procedure for receiving a reclamation certificate. Somewhere in there it said.
Somewhere in there, it said that the permutee requesting the certification could only do that two times a year.
Correct.
So I had a two-part question to that. And one was, why are we being specific? Has that been an onerous task in the past, I mean, or situation where in the past where you'd have too many times? And then number two, did, was that designated to be per project, if that permutee happened to be more than doing one more project or that kind of thing?
No. Actually, the reclamation covers thousands of acres, and there really wasn't any defined process for releasing these thousand acres. This, the reclamation, or certification of released reclamation will be on contiguous areas based on the reclamation type. There's uplands, wetlands, forested wetlands, and things like that. None of that was spelled out in before, it just says.
No, I got that, and that was really good. I liked that part. I was just, I was just trying to understand about why he was limited to two. Is there a problem with that?
Oh, yeah, the tracking of it all, because, you know, if they came in every two weeks, there'd be a lot of reclamation processing going on. So trying to limit it just to twice a year, they can come in the spring, and we've got all this ready for release, and then if they have more in the fall, they could come in again.
Okay, so my understanding would be, just, correct me if I'm wrong, you want to avoid the situation where if it's a thousand acres, he won't be coming in for a lease of one acre here, five acres here, two acres here.
Exactly.
So you're saying you can do 250 now, but the next one's got to be 750 if you want the whole thing?
Uh.
Round numbers.
Yeah, all right, those numbers would work, yes. Yeah, it's so they don't come in, all right, well, we got five acres here, we want that released, and then next two weeks from now, well, we got 10 more.
Got it, that makes sense.
Trying to track it all.
And is there ever conceivable realistic, I mean, I know there's always a possibility, but is there a conceivable realistic situation where that permutee might be working on several different projects at once that are not contiguous to each other, so you've limited him to only two per year?
No, it's, yes, they will be working on various projects, but they're, the two per year is just two times a year. They can come in with 10 projects in the spring and 20 in the fall if they want. We just don't want them to be coming in, you know, at the beginning of October, they came in with 15, and then in the middle of October, another 10. You know, it's just a bookkeeping issue, trying to track it all. They can come at more than one.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? No further questions? I cannot recall if I, I asked if there was any public comment on this or not, so I will ask, any public comment on this item, the reclamation release process? Okay, no public comment? No further questions from Commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make the motion that we find the attached resolution finding the proposed land development code text amendment related to reclamation release process regulations in unincorporated Hillsborough County consistent and forwarded on to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Joseph, we got seconded by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are moving on to.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission staff and the Commissioners for working with us on the, on the addition of the winery text, and also for the late submittal, and also for working with us in today's hearing. So thank you very much, we appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we are going to move on to item number six, the City of Tampa Plan Amendment Briefings.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, Jennifer Malone with your staff. I'm going to introduce our plan amendments for this cycle and begin briefing on 1912. This is going to look familiar to you because it came before you at your May hearing, it's a public hearing, but the request is slightly different. While this commission voted to, found this consistent, it got to Tampa City Council and was then denied. So the applicant is back before you today. This is the West Shore Planning District. It's the blue box right here. If you might recall, when this was before you in May, it was six parcels excluding this parcel right here, but it was all six. Today, it's just two parcels. So I have Lois and Laurel. This is a City of Tampa maintenance facility. This is an apartment community. I also have the Loretta Ingram Community Pool, and we're in the Carver City-Lincoln Gardens area. So it is a privately initiated amendment at about 0.34 acres. The request is from residential 10 to residential 35. That would increase the density. We don't usually show an existing land use map, but we made the decision to show it for this case, just to illustrate the fact that this is publicly owned land. The blue is public, and that's the City of Tampa Maintenance Facility. And then we also have the multifamily to the north, and then the yellow is the single family in the area. And one of the lots is vacant. The adopted future land use is residential 10 to the north. We have that regional mixed use 100, but if you might recall, a lot of this is the City of Tampa Maintenance Facility, and then we have that multifamily right here to the north. And we also have a little bit of right-of-way with the interstate to the south. And if requested, this would be changed, or as requested, this would change to residential 35 as a proposal on just two parcels. This would increase the potential impacts from about three units to 11 units. It would also increase the square footage from 5,000 to approximately 8,000 square feet. So overall, that's increasing that density and intensity, but the subject site would still be required to meet locational criteria to utilize any of that square footage. And we'll be back before you at your November hearing for this. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Just, I don't know if, when you look at this as staff, if you go back to your future land use map, so the publicly owned property is solid waste, fleet maintenance, and a portion of it also is county-owned. In the city budget this year, there is funding to study potential relocation of at least the city's portion of that site. So when you look at a finding of So when you look at a finding of consistency or inconsistency, do you take that into consideration knowing that maybe now there is some, a little bit of certainty that that could actually become RMU 100?
Okay, so it, well, it is adopted as RMU 100 today. So it's not going to become RMU 100, is RMU 100. We did take that into consideration as part of our analysis the first time that, and we take this into consideration every time, that this could be sold tomorrow, and it would be about, I mean, I think this whole compla, I, I don't want to speak, but this is several hundred acres right here. Times 100 would be that many dwelling units. So we, we definitely take that into consideration regardless.
And then just to follow up. Last time, it was, it was still, they were still going for R35 last time?
That is correct.
So just the difference is it's less...
Less parcels. It's six parcels last time, now it's two.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Was this the, the same density that was proposed when we first saw this?
Yes, as I previously stated, it was for the first time from residential 10 to residential 35. The difference is that the first time it was six parcels, and this time it is two parcels.
Okay, that's the difference. Okay. Okay, fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-13.
Good afternoon, Michelle Ogilvy, Plan Hillsborough staff. I masquerade as MPO staff some days. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present our proposed amendment, health in all policies, to the Tampa Comprehensive Plan text. We'll begin by defining health. Health is determined, and human health, that is, is determined 50% by our behavior and 50% by public policy, which includes access to education, to employment or jobs, services, and healthy food. And these have been part of a conversation going on for many years, actually, a century or so. And Robert Woods has been working in this regard and has provided this information that we've been working with the Hillsborough Health Department, the City of Tampa, the MPO, as well as many community members. So I should also say that this health in all policies text amendment is a summary of about three years of work. When we talk about health in all policies, we are describing a collaborative approach to connect and integrate health in our policies and system practice. And of course, our comprehensive plan is all of that. And as you can see on the screen, we're talking about the whole system of land use, transportation, energy, and other things that provide for our health. The background, of course, is publicly initiated amendment, as outlined in your report. Health in all policies approach in the comprehensive plan. Evidence-based, evidence-based measurement process. And the map to, on the right of the screen is our health in all policies atlas, or health atlas, that is on our website today. We use it for a project we were working on in the last three years. And it shows diabetes, which is a direct, it can be quite, I should say, diabetes two, not one. I've corrected on that many times. In which we can see that there are a myriad of things that can help with allowing for diabetes to appear. And you can see some of our less affluent neighborhoods is where that prevalence occurs. And why is that? Well, it disappeared. I had another slide, disappeared. But health is about that 50% of the public things that we do access. And so we will be bringing you back this report in, I guess, about a month's time. And we will have lots more to tell you about this as we move forward. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Michelle, for updating us on this. Correct me if I'm wrong, the MPO board has already adopted this?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, they did.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're, we're here today discussing this so that at some point in not-too-distant future, the Planning Commission can do the same.
This is a proposed text amendment to the Tampa Comprehensive Plan
Comprehensive Plan.
To include the policy about health in all policies in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. So then it, it, it's on the second page of the summary, exactly what the wording is that would be included in the plan.
Okay. My next question, maybe it's more appropriate in the MPO forum, let's say. But, but as we're looking at this as part of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, let's say, are we also, or how do the impacts from the interstate in terms of air quality factor into this, or do they?
I, that is an interesting question. In a little time, you will be getting a report on, well, you did the other day on the SEIS. And certainly, that was part of the analysis that we did look at in that time period, based on the metrics. And we are doing the same for the long-range transportation plan and the metrics that the MPO did approve earlier this year on health in all policies to flag and to show some opportunities where we could make better, advance better optics or actions, depending on what it is we're doing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you soon.
Move on to Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-14.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. The next item is part of Phase, it's really Phase Two of the Dedicated Park Flu Update for the City of Tampa. I'll be presenting the first three, and Danny and Jennifer will be presenting the last four items. This round or phase, we have seven sites that we've worked with the Parks Department and the city to identify and bring forward for this round. Site A is Waterworks Park. You can see that's just north of us here, downtown De Soto Park. Over in Pimentel Beach, we have Cypress Point Park over in West Shore. Site D is down in South Tampa, as Site E is as well, at Gadston Park. And then we move up toward Central Tampa, Site F, Reed Park, and G. They're both on the Hillsborough River, Rivercrest Park is Site G. Again, a little background, this is publicly initiated by Tampa City Council. It is to recognize existing City of Tampa parks that are listed in the city's dedicated park list, which is Section 1691 of the Land Development Code. All sites would be recognized to that recreational open space future land use category. So the first site, Site A, 1914, we should all be familiar with, it's right up the road. It's in the Central Tampa Planning District, and more specifically, the Tampa Heights neighborhood. Here is the subject site. It's, this is 275. This is the off-ramp here that runs into the actual park, or adjacent to the park. The Hillsborough River, Ulailey, the restaurant is just to the north. You have Blake High School across the river there. And then north on Tampa Street to the east. Currently, that, the subject site is that regional mixed use 100, which is the most intensive land use category outside of downtown Tampa. That's all that purple. That also includes the Heights Project itself. Over near Franklin Street is the Community Commercial 35. There is edge of downtown here in the Central Business District by that, I guess it's a reddish brown, and then some public along the river near Blake High School. And Blake is actually that residential 35. And if approved, that would go to the recreational open space, which is that light green color. Under that RMU 100 category, 371 units, residential units, or maximum 565,626 square feet could be considered on that site. This would remove that potential, and all future development would need to be recreational-oriented. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So David, this is, this is sort of correcting a land use condition.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
That brings it up to date with the city's dedicated parks list.
The recreation, the recreational open space will better reflect the actual use on the site currently.
Okay. And there are five, there are five of these that are...
There are seven this round, and we will, we're continuing to work with our parks, the city's Parks Department, because they're bringing the parks forward, that they feel comfortable at that stage, that they've worked through any legal issues to ensure that it's ready to go to that recreational open space. So seven this round.
Okay, right. So that was my next question. There has to be others.
Oh, there'll be others, yeah.
Okay.
That's why this is only Phase Two. There's multiple phases.
Would a, although it's mostly on water, would, would, would a feature like the, the River Walk be added to, could it be added to something like this? I mean, there's a portion of it that's, well, small portion, that's on land. The rest is over, over water. But, but again, looking at this map, which shows the blue on the other side of the river, which could also be a West Bank River Walk at some point in the future. Could, could the existing River Walk be, be a part of this as well?
What we're finding out is that was moved forward by the Parks Department to be considered. The issue that we're having is some of the, some of the portions of the River Walk are actually over the river. There actually is no land associated with it. Unlike this, there is actually a trail on the land.
Right.
So we are looking at where it goes onto the land, ensuring those areas are under that rec, open space. But where it goes out over the river, it's, it's water. The comp plan defines it as water. There's no folio associated with it.
Right.
So there's nothing really for us to tie the land use to.
Okay. I, I just raised the question because I'm, you know, I'm just wondering if there's a situation where somebody could come in and cut off the River Walk? Or if there's a, a new land use that could be introduced that would do that in, in, any place?
I, I, we could always look into that. I will say that the, the Parks Department is really ensured that they're, they own that where the connection points are, and where they don't own it, they've gone out over the river. Kind of like where the Cap Trust building
Right.
is, it kind of jets out past it, so...
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's my understanding that the River Walk is considered a linear park, so that might come before us at some point.
Well, again, it can be in the dedicated park list, but if there's not actual land that's under it, we may not be able to dedicate it, do that it's over the river.
True, but I mean, the vast majority of it is on the land.
Yeah. And in those portions, like McDill Park, the USF Park, we're going to ensure that all those are, get to that appropriate category if they're not already.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right.
Okay.
Whoops. Let's get to Site B here. Next is Site B, De Soto Park. This is in the Central Tampa Planning District, over in Pimentel Beach neighborhood. This is the entire site. You can see this, South Bermuda Boulevard, Pimentel Beach's version of Bay Shore. There's 22nd Street over to the west. You have the Leroy Salmon to the north. There's actually an industrial use being constructed over here. I think, believe it's a warehouse. And then South 34th Street. This park, a portion of it, basically half is already recreational open space. The other portion, which is represented by this brown, is residential 35. We are moving forward with bringing forward the entire park. We did have some issues when we were brought forward, and you'll, you'll see this later on in the presentation, where there was a portion, the Parks Department was having a problem dealing with just creating a legal just for that portion. So we've talked with our legal and city legal to ensure that, moving forward, this will make it easier for everyone if we bring the entire site into, and reference the folio. So the portion that really is changing is that residential 35 on the east side. But you could see it's residential 10 further to the west, and there's some residential 20. This is where the elementary school is just in the north. And then as you continue east, it goes into that industrial area, light and heavy, and then some public uses like the trash incinerators over there. There's also McKay Bay Nature Preserve just off this map. So see, once this is completed, the entire park within the folio boundaries would now be the recreational open space. This would remove the potential for 224 units or 175,000 square feet of non-residential if this was ever under private ownership. It isn't. It's part of the city, and any uses would need to be that recreational-oriented. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, how long has this, how long has this been a park?
Oh, long, long time. I think it was an old streetcar park, where you used to pay to get on the streetcar and go out and leave the big city and go out and enjoy the, the natural amenities on the, on the, on the waterfront there. So it's, it's been there quite a while.
Okay. Were there any brownfields issues or considerations in, in, in this at any point?
That I'm not aware of. We can, we can check on that for you.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? We can move on to the next.
Okay. This Site C, we're over at Cypress Point Park, over in the West Shore Planning District. Again, this is the entire site. When we get to the future land use map, you'll see that there's only some smaller portions that aren't already the recreational open space. But you could see, here's the Memorial Highway. The mall is right off here, the West Shore Mall, excuse me, right off the aerial there. But you could see there's a lot of office and industrial, and the main access point is in, from West Cypress Street, right here. But of course, this is the bay. And the airport, of course, is to the north. Again, it's, it's kind of hard to see because it's light gray and green, but there's some actual light gray here, which is that airport compatibility district, and also some, I believe some in here. Usually, it's brighter on our other screens, but the majority of the park is already that recreational open space. And then it's, again, hard to see, but these little areas are now that light green, so the entire park would now be that recreational open space. Since there's no residential permitted in the municipal airport district, there are, you don't lose any units. They're, based on that minor areas of the, that were that airport compatibility, there would be a reduction of approximately 200,000 square feet of non-residential. And again, those portions would need to be recreation, recreational-oriented. Questions?
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, now, in this situation, we have a park that's been there for a while, and we have a new or proposed trail sort of coming into it, and then sort of...
Kind of meanders through, my understa, it comes down and then meanders through.
Right, but once it gets to Cypress Street, it goes east.
Right.
Okay. Does, how does that work with the, the park itself in terms of the, you know, land use designation?
The trail's on the north side of Cypress.
Right.
It comes down and then is on the north side, if my memory serves me.
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware, the, I'm, my understanding is the trail, that portion of the trail on Cypress is actually within the right-of-way, not within a park portion. So this amendment would not really affect that portion of that trail.
Okay, I, I guess my question has to do with connecting.
Connecting.
Connecting our...
It's a little challenging because the, and maybe when the city staff... It's a little challenging because the, and maybe when the city staff, we can concur, we can discuss this with the city staff and come back and to you with an answer. The, the difficulty is the park, I believe, was part of an office park because you actually have to enter the office park to get to the back of the park.
To get to the park itself, right.
And the, I don't think the entrance was appropriately planned for someday having a park at the other end. So it may be that driveway area that, the thin strip of land that, I get back to the map. This, this strip here is the entryway and it's very narrow. So there may be opportunities down here of doing a connection potentially if, as long as transportation and, but the, the trail comes down like this and then goes like that.
Right.
So it, it may be able to be connected there with a, with a crossing. But again, that would have to really be answered by city and what their staff is looking at.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Moreno?
I, I just want to jump on that, just to clarify. So the, what is called the U-Path, because it follows the utility corridor, is, it parallels what is considered to be West LaSalle Street, but is really just the off-ramp between Memorial or State Road 60 and Cypress Street. So just to the west of that intersection, basically between the, where your cursor is and that strip of, that, that, you know, dotted line strip, just between that is the actual crossing of the trail. It then, a portion of trail then runs along the south side of Cypress Street and the official, or really it's a sidewalk. And then in the park itself is the trail. And so if you drive over there, you could kind of see the trail meander through. And then I think kind of what, what, what David was getting to in terms of, you know, the additional property that had to be added, along Rio Street and Cypress, that would be the connection to the Howard Franklin Bridge Trail. And so I, I don't, maybe city staff can talk about this next time around, but the city staff and FDOT are already working on what does Rio look like in the future, not only to accept that trail, but then also Rio becomes an interchange for 275. And then what, the organization that I work for, the Westshore Alliance, one of the projects that we're working on is a complete street for Cypress because once you get on the other side of 275 on Cypress, south of there, there's actually a, a dedicated sort of cycle track that runs along the frontage road and Lemon Street. And then another block over, you're to O'Brien Street, and that's going to have a trail there too, or really a side path. So this is good that this is being done right now because there's a lot of projects that are going to occur there. And so having this protection there for the open space is going to be critical as all these new roads get built over the next five to 10 years.
Okay. Okay. Move on to the next.
Thank you.
I'm Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. Our next case is in the South Tampa Planning District and more specifically, it's in the Gandy Sun Bay South neighborhood. This is an area, this is an area of the subject site. You'll see the sites outlined in red and a more, majority of it is, currently has a lot of water on it. This is South Manhattan Avenue. This is Robinson High School here. And then this is Mango Avenue going east to west. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see it, it has two future land use categories. The northern portion in this tan color is residential 10. And the southern portion is recreation open space. You'll see that there's residential 10 to the north and east. The south portion is public for Robinson High School. This red is CC 35. And then this dark green color is the residential 35. This, this is a slideshow on the potential impacts of the request. Like David said, this would remove any residential development from the site, so the, there wouldn't be any residential development under the res 10. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for our executive director. Can you go back to the land use map?
Sure.
Yeah, that one. How in the world did something like that happen? Because this was never, it was never developed. And it seemed like it was, it's probably wet and low-lying, but how, how did the, how did the, the res 10 land use actually come down that far?
Well, I, I don't know for sure, but I can tell you that when the first land use maps were made, they were not digital land use maps. They were drawn with, you know, colored pencils and they did not have parcel lines on them. And so when we, what I understand is then they had to be digitized and so folks followed whatever, you know, best boundary they had and tried to match up what the, the hand-drawn map was to the, to, to create a digital one. And, and I think that's why we see those issues where some of these parcels are split. In, in this case, it clearly was all one parcel to begin with. Some of the others, you can tell they added on property or something like that. But that, that would be my best guess as to how it happened.
Okay. Any other questions? We can move on to the next.
Okay, this is our fifth park. It's also in the South Tampa Planning District. It's Gaston Park and it's in Interbay neighborhood. This is an area of the subject site. This is, again, the subject site is outlined in red. This is South Dale Mayberry Highway. Everything south of Dale Mayberry is McDill Air Force Base. And then you'll see, just to the north and east, are, are single-family residences. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see that the site has multiple future land use categories. This blue, I don't know if it's showing blue on the slide, this represents water that's, that's on the site. This, this yellow is the residential 6. And then this green is the recreation open space. This is the proposed future land use map, basically showing the entire site in green. You'll see the blue to the south is, is public. This area to the west is, is light industrial. And then you'll see a mix of residential 10 and residential 20 to the north. Again, this would remove the consideration of residential development from the site. Currently, it's about 209 acre, or 209 units and about 1.5 million square feet of non-residential development. The proposed request would, would remove that, that consideration from the site. Are there any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? Okay. No questions?
Jennifer from Woon with your Planning Commission staff. I'm just going to round us out with our last two sites. Subject site F is Reed Park. It's in the Central Tampa Planning District as well as in Seminole Heights. We're at River Heights Avenue right here. It's a little bit of a strange shape. This is North Boulevard and then this is the Hillsborough River. It is all residential 20, outlined in the black. There's some residential 10 around the area. And then this would take it to recreation open space. It would remove the potential for about 100 dwelling units on that site and 100,000 square feet. That would be not applicable because it would be going to recreation open space. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Last, we have Rivercrest Park. That is subject site G. It is also in Seminole Heights Urban Village. It's a little to the north of the site I showed you previously. It's outlined here in blue. That is North Boulevard that kind of deadends this park. And then we have the Hillsborough River. It is a split land use of our residential 10 and recreation open space. The blue, this public, that is Broward Elementary School. It's Broward Elementary School. And this would take it all to recreation open space. And then it would remove the potential for about 45 dwelling units and approximately 68,000 square feet because it would be going to recreation open space. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Oh, David reminded me multiple times and I still forgot. We have subject site E, Sulfur Springs Park. We're not briefing on this today, but it will be back before you at your November hearing. There was a, an issue with the legal description, so we're just bringing that back through the public hearing process so we can get everything on record correctly.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is Tampa Conference of Planning Amendment 1915.
This is Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. This is Tampa Plan Amendment 1915. The subject site is in the Central Tampa Planning District. It's within the historic Ebor neighborhood and it's also in Ebor City Urban Village. This is an area of the subject site. You'll see the site here shown in blue. It's on East Third Avenue. This is North 19th Street. This is North 17th Street. This is, this area over here is Philip Shore School. And this is Adamo Drive, an arterial that runs through Ebor City. This is just a close-up area of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Just a little background of the request. This is privately initiated, initiated. This is a small-scale amendment, approximately 0.23 acres. The request is to go from general mixed-use 24 to urban mixed-use 60. This is the adopted future land use map. You'll see the subject site is, is here. This is general mixed-use 24. This area to the north of the subject site is CMU 35. This area right here is UMU 60. This is, this blue color is public semi-public. And then this area to the west of the subject site is GMU 24. And this is the proposed future land use map. The proposed request would allow for an increase in development potential by allowing higher residential density and greater commercial intensity. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No. We move on to the last one.
All right. David Hay, Planning Commission staff. Your last amendment in this briefing is a text amendment, text amendment 1916. A little background, this is publicly initiated by Planning Commission staff in cooperation with our partners over at the city. You all are aware, the transitional use 24, there are areas of our city that are designated this category. And the unique factors in that category is it basically allows everything, industrial, residential, commercial. There's no real direction given in the plan of where, what these areas are to develop out into. We have run into situations recently where the city has had difficulties when we've had rezonings dealing with a transitional use 24 and there's residential in there and an industrial use wants to locate right next to it. The plan is really silent on that. So staff did feel that it was maybe appropriate to give a little more direction in the plan to outline the future of that category. So we've recommended the language that's included within your packet and I'll, I'll give a description of what we believe that language does. It does provide additional policy guidance related to that category. It directs staff to periodically review properties designate that TU 24. You've already seen some in front of you recently. And when warranted, recommend plan amendments to a more appropriate future land use category. That will now be a policy if it is approved. It would recognize, it would add language to recognize the adopted zoning pattern in the surrounding area during any proposed rezoning of a parcel designated as TU 24. That would give staff further direction, like in Pimento Beach, when we have an intensive use surrounded by residential, we can really take that into greater consideration when reviewing rezonings. And it would prohibit any new map amendments seeking the TU 24, future land use category. We have had about two instances where people have come in and asked for that category, asked at least what staff felt about that. We've historically interpreted how the wording is on that category that we've basically said we, it's not encouraged. This will finally give staff a little more assurances that the, the comp plan actually backs up the staff interpretation on, on that. Questions?
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, this, this, this TU 24 land use designation sounds like a big problem. I mean, does it, does it cause, because you're saying that anything can go, go in there, but you've been discouraging people from seeking the, the designation.
It, it, it does cause staff challenges when looking at an area. I'll put it that way.
It sounds like a sort of a catch-all land use designation.
It was an older category. I think when they first did the comprehensive plan, they looked at these very, I'll say, eclectic areas where people were doing a wide range of uses. And instead of going in and, and really defining that, they just created this category and basically left it up to the marketplace to dictate. And another category similar is the general mixed-use 24. The areas where that was placed, we've seen a clear direction toward residential. Most of that is over in West Tampa near Rome. We've seen all those warehouses change into, you know, these multi-story apartment buildings and condominiums and townhomes. The areas designated to you 24 have not seen that kind of market force kind of give it guidance, so.
Are we talking about a lot of these designations or around?
There are scattered areas, lots out on Broadway. If you go out on Broadway east of Ebor, you did have some up in East Tampa. A lot of them are over in East Tampa, near the railroad tracks or some near the railroad tracks that go up through East Tampa. So there are scattered areas that we're, we're looking at.
Are we trying to sort of phase them out?
That's what, yes, that's what staff has been looking at. You know, you've seen the other ones come before you recently, providing recommendations on, based on the approvals of the zoning, what it's entitled for. And then, you know, of course, we talk to any private applicants to see if they are willing to go to a more appropriate category to reflect what they have. And we've had success so far, so.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
And one final thing, we'll be back on November 18th with staff recommendations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We're on item number seven, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And Melissa is our presenter.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. The county has an Affordable Housing Advisory Board, similar to the board that Commissioner Rodriguez sits on for the city of Tampa. Prior to September of this year, staff has been sitting on that board, but the county made a change to ask that it be a voting member of the Planning Commission on the board. So with that, we will need you all to appoint somebody, discuss amongst yourselves.
Is there anyone interested to begin with? Commissioner Bell? Any other interest?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Melissa, in, in reading the language, it says that the appointment is for three years.
Yes.
Doesn't that present a problem?
Well, yes.
For a planning commissioner?
Potentially, if the, I mean, because the three years may not align with your, through your term.
With your term.
So at, at whatever point that you, the commissioner was no longer a planning commissioner, the planning commission would have to appoint somebody else for the remainder of the term, much like we do for planning commissioners. much like we do for planning commissioners. And then I think the three years.
Well, the reason, the reason I'm going there is all of our other, like the Hillsborough River Board and the MPO and all those other things, we're doing one year. I don't know without looking, I don't know how many people that are currently sitting on this board have three years left on their term. Okay? Well, I mean, that's, that's kind of where.
Yeah. It definitely is unusual. They did not ask for my input in creating the language that they put in the resolution. Otherwise, I probably would have suggested that, you know, appointing somebody in November with a one-year term like we do the others would be appropriate. So I'm working with what I was given.
Right. So I would, I would suggest that you proceed and try to get that aligned.
Okay.
At a future date, and then I would gladly move that we select Commissioner Powell to serve.
Second? We got a second?
Only if he can make the next meeting October 7.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dowdy, a second by Commissioner Joseph. Any discussion before we vote?
Can I just make a comment?
Commissioner Murray?
I'm glad Cody raises, Commissioner Powell raised his hand because I think he's the most qualified, or no disrespect to anybody, but I, I, when his term is up in three years, is it possible to make it as part of our regular voting stuff?
Yeah, right. That's, that's.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
Okay, okay. All right. I wasn't sure if that was the one-year thing or?
Yeah, no, I would like her to pursue with the board to try to get it to where it's one-year, one-year appointments from the Planning Commission.
And we can make it as part of our, like, our voting process. Okay, okay.
They're very eager because of some of the funding that was recently given to the, there's an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was established by the Board of County Commissioners in the recent budget, and this board will be looking at that, and so they're, they were very eager to have an appointment made as quickly as possible. Not in time for October 7th, though.
So, yeah, so we have a motion, made by Commissioner Dowdy, second by Commissioner Joseph. No discussion at all? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, Executive Director's report. I'll try to be brief. At your table, you have the report. Because it was right at the end of the fiscal year when we were producing this, we went ahead and handed it out, so that you have, the first page is actually FY 2019, and closes out the year, and then the second page of contracts are the things that have carried over from the prior year, or continuing contracts. My report of things that I've been doing is also at your desk. We had a great information barbecue, Brown Bag Quarterly, about Buzz About Bees that was in the Tampa Heights Community Garden at the end of September. That was a lot of fun. We've had a couple of times where we've, I've been requested to attend Board of County Commissioners meetings. They have been discussing and, or in the process of instituting a moratorium on increases in density and intensity in the residential planned 2 category. The RP 2 is, you may know it, and there's an agenda item on Wednesday's agenda for a similar action regarded to the Wy Mama Village Residential 2 category. So a number of concerns there, where they're asking to put a pause on new zoning applications so that we can go out and update those categories and make some revisions. So those will be two major work products that we'll be working on coming, coming forward in this, in the next few months, going out with outreach in the community in both Wy Mama and the Baum River View areas where the RP 2 is. So those are two major things that we'll be working on. Another, and this one just failed to make the list here, on October 9th, there was a great joint workshop between the MPO and HART, and Commissioner Green may delve into this more, but there was a lot of discussion about transit-oriented development and a desire to see us work on making sure our policies continue to be useful as the conversation about transit advances. So we'll be continuing to work with HART on the grant that they received related to TOD. And I wanted to make mention that on, we are celebrating our 60th anniversary of the Planning Commission. October 1st, 1959 was the first day the Planning Commission was in, happened. We're going to have it at the awards program. So we're going to be not just celebrating that one day, we're celebrating the whole rest of the year, and so we'll be commemorating it at the awards program on October 29th, which I hope most of you will be able to join us at. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that starting November 12th, staff will be moving out of this floor because they are going to be redoing all of the air conditioning in this, hopefully it'll make it even. We're excited, we're hopeful that that will happen because we have like cold spots, hot spots. At any rate, we're going to be at 700 Twiggs Street for about six to eight weeks. That also means that our November 18th Planning Commission meeting is going to be held on the 26th floor. We'll have lots of signs directing you there if you forget, but we'll be up on the 26th floor. Our December meeting will be held in the second-floor B O C C chambers. So at any rate, just wanted to make you aware of all of that. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next up is other business, under chair's business. I don't have anything, so any old business? Any old business? Any new business? Any committee reports? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Melissa was mentioning, rather, we did have a fairly robust meeting last, last week with the HART, HART Board, the MPO Board, and TIBARDA. And there was a lot of really good information about how we can get started with the, with mass transit and looking at the way our, our applications, let's say, might be reviewed by the feds in Washington. So there was a lot of good information about a lot of the steps we have to go through, the things we have to make sure that we do locally and all of that. I, I just wish that, that, that was, was that broadcast, do you know? It was not? Okay. I wish, I wish it was because there was a lot of things that, that a lot of people need to know and understand about our transportation future, let's say. And, and as Jennifer talked about earlier, we're waiting on, HART, HART, HART is, excuse me, HART is supposed to develop a, I guess, the overall transportation plan, okay, which would include bus service expansion, BRT, express bus, whatever, as well as any new type of fixed guideway transportation systems, whether it's the expansion to the streetcar, a modernization of the streetcar line, and expansion of that, as well as any new, any new system related to, to either commuter rail or light rail. But I have to, I have to admit, we sort of left the meeting without saying when we're going to get back together and, and keep the discussion going, so. But maybe that'll come up in the MPO Board meeting next, next month, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dowdy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd give a brief report on the Hillsborough River Board Technical Advisory Committee. The, the one item noted at our last meeting was a presentation we received from Tom Ash with Hillsborough County EPC, talking about the water, water quality monitoring within Hillsborough County that EPC has since the 1970s, they've been sampling and analyzing water quality in the various water bodies within the county. They have 250 stations today throughout the county and have been, been tracking water quality for quite some time. The information's been used by a number of the regional agencies that we have, and they, they grade water quality kind of like an academic report card, and have demonstrated basically improvements in water quality over the course of time. They've been able to, you know, identify problem areas and direct via themselves or via other agencies where to go to try to fix things and improve the water quality in our area. So it was rather an interesting presentation. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Nope. Actually, we are going to the statement of interest forms?
The statement of interest forms. There we go. The statement of interest forms, we got the summary here, and this will serve as the initial nominee list for the elections to be held at the November meeting. For Chair, we have Commissioner Dix, Commissioner Joseph, Commissioner Thrower. For Vice Chair, we have Commissioner Dowdy, Joseph, Marino, Powell, and Thrower. For Member-at-Large, Commissioners Dowdy, Joseph, Marino, Powell, and Thrower. For MPO Member, Commissioners Green and Marino. MPO Alternative, Commissioners Dowdy, Kress, Marino. For the Ad hoc Committee Boards, we have, for the PIC, Commissioners Powell, Thrower. For the Budget, we have Commissioners Joseph, Powell, Thrower. For River TAC, we have Commissioners Dowdy, Powell. Again, this will serve as the initial nominee list. There will be an opportunity for additional nominees from the floor at the November meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or anything? Pretty straightforward, thanks. Okay, we do have a public hearing scheduled in a few minutes, so I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks.
[inaudible]